All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We have a presentation before we get started with this is a public comment from the stormwater, our stormwater annual update. Gentlemen, welcome. Aren't you glad it's four o'clock instead of seven?
Yeah.
Something different anyway.
Good afternoon versus good evening. We have a slide presentation for you today. She's loading up.
There we go.
There you go. Okay. This is the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, IDDE for short. My name is Rich Burns and this is Russell Mahalik from GHD. We've been giving this presentation for several years now.
Ten.
Ten. Next slide. Just real quick, we used to be Conestoga Rovers and Associates, CRA. We are now GHD. Our company merged with an international engineering firm, so we are now one of the largest in the world. GHD actually has an office in Doylestown and Russ and I are from the Exden office. Next slide. The agenda for tonight, there's only 18 slides, so it goes pretty quick. We'll go over the current status of the program, what we did in 2015 as far as inspections of outfalls, the sampling we did and the results. Something new this year, we did some DNA sampling of our stormwater samples. We'll talk about next year in 2016, takeaways from the program and any questions and answers you may have at the end. Next slide. The current status of the program, we are now in year 13 of this program, so it's been going on for quite a long time. We completed a typical hotspot sampling, so this is a mature program now. We've have several hundred outfalls throughout the township. Last few years, we've concentrated on what are known as hotspots, basically where we've had results of elevated fecal coliform. In addition, this year, the township specifically requested that GHD inspect approximately 60 additional outfalls as well as the hotspots. Padeup 2015, we communicate with the case manager for the DP MPDS program who reviews the reports the township submits. He remains pleased, he's happy with what Doylestown Township is doing. He's aware of the application, it's been submitted for updating the permit for the MPDS for the township. Padeup is working on a new general permit conditions and that takes it to March 2018?
That will be available in 2018.
Available in March 2018.
Yes, a new one will come out in 2018.
A new permit. So the township will get a new full permit at that time. Township has to submit a notice of intent for the individual applications. That's not due until 2017 for the permit. Next slide. Again, what we do here is basically stormwater sampling. This is really an offshoot of the U.S. EPA Clean Water Act and what the townships are required is the stormwater outfalls. They're called municipal separate stormwater systems, MSS, so MS4 for short. And basically what we're looking for is illicit discharges. So what we do is dry weather inspection and sampling. So there's a picture on the left of an outfall with water flow and one on the right is dry. And this is 72 hours after the last significant precipitation event, so obviously you wouldn't expect to see flow, but on the left we do. So that may be an indication of an illicit discharge. Next slide. Is that it?
No.
Just some more pictures.
Just some more pictures.
Catch basins, that's things we look down to see what direction it leads us to the next outfall. We've mapped the entire township via the inspections and on the right, you can see some suds. Again, this is during like dry weather inspection, you wouldn't expect to see flow, let alone some suds. Again, a sign of potential illicit discharge. That's the map of the township. We have it kind of color coded and divided into three areas. The one on the far left is area three, the one on the bottom is area one, and the one on the right is area two. And it basically matches the township's septic cycle map, so we're in sync with that. Next slide. There's the septic cycle map and that's basically how we divided up the township as far as areas that we sample and monitor. As you know, the cycles for the septic cleanouts revolve over a three-year cycle. We have several hundred on the map, you can see a lot of the dots, those are outfalls that we've all inspected or tried to sample at one time or another. Next slide. For 2015, we already completed our focused inspections and sampling. We monitored historical hotspots again in all three areas. We finished the additional inspections and sampling that the township requested. Those were only in areas one and two. Those were about 60 additional outfalls. And what we sample for is again fecal coliform. That's an indicator test of possible pathogens like E. coli, which are unhealthy. This is part of the EPA Clean Water Act again. So we look for flow at the outfalls and in the areas and if they have flow, we sample them. So in area one, we had 11 samples, area two, 14, and area three, we only had three samples. Then we collect all the data, we send it out to an accredited laboratory, does the fecal coliform testing. We review that data and this year, we kind of did something different. We reviewed the total fecal coliform numbers and we chose some specific areas that had increased levels in the past or currently this year and we selected them for DNA fingerprinting. And basically what that does is gives us a further indication of what it may be coming from, human or animal. Next slide. And there's different sources of fecal coliform in the environment. Basically, you can see some birds, cows, geese, humans, and that's what these extra DNA testing analyses can provide us. Next slide. And there's the breakdown of the lab we chose. They can break it down into goose, cow, ruminant, which I believe is like deer, sheep. We can break it down into dog and human. Next slide. So the results for area one in 2015, we took 16 samples at 14 outfalls and out of those, two were submitted for extra DNA testing. We'll go over the DNA tests on another slide. This is the fecal coliform results. We had six results that were greater than 200, which is kind of the state's baseline for seeing contamination. So we had six results over that, 200 colonies per 100 milliliter. The maximum number was 1,900. And again, DNA testing results, we had one positive for human and one positive for dog. Next slide. Area two, we took 14 samples at 11 outfalls and three were submitted for additional DNA testing. Four samples were greater than our baseline of 200 and we had one maximum fecal coliform greater than 6,000, which is pretty much the max the lab can tell us, so that's highly elevated. We ran three samples for DNA, two came positive for human and one positive for dog. Next slide. Area three, we only took three samples at three outfalls and we did not submit any additional samples for DNA and those samples were greater than 200, so area three is good. Next slide. Just a summation of all three areas. Generally, area one, the fecal coliform levels somewhat decreased from last year. We had two greater than 6,000 though this year. Let's see.
No, that was last year.
Or that's last year.
Last year.
Last year, sorry. Two greater than 6,000 last year, so this year's max was only 1,900, so that's somewhat of an improvement. Area two, no significant changes. We had a maximum of 1,200. And area three, nothing was above 200, so that's good. And basically overall, pretty much the same as the year previous. Next slide. Going forward, we'll continue doing hotspot sampling in areas one, two, and three. Usually generally, we try to hit about 25 locations. Some years, these hotspots have flow and sometimes they don't. We'll do any additional inspections that the township requests. Continue to comply with the current permit, which was effective starting from 2013. Additional source investigations as needed. We've done these in the past, we may continue them again. Dye tracing, if we think some of the results of this investigation indicate illicit discharge is coming from a specific homeowner or area of homes, we'll request from the homeowners to do dye tracing where we pour dye down a toilet and we trace it down and see if it comes out the storm basins and the catch basins in the street. We've also done TV inspections in the past where we actually run a little remote camera up the catch basins to see if there's any legal connections into the storm sewers. And we'll most likely continue the DNA testing since we got positive results from that. Especially if we get some flow at spots we don't normally, that we didn't get flow this past year, but in previous years, we might've got a high fecal. If we get flow, we'll probably select a few more for DNA testing and we'll start mapping that out. Next slide. Basically, the conclusion, takeaways, township remains in compliance with the MS4 MPDS IDD program. We'll continue the inspections and sampling. Again, this is highly related to septic system maintenance from homeowners in the township. Public participation is key. It's about pollution prevention and good housekeeping. And again, the overall goal is to improve water quality. And that is the end of the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
We're doing our budget now, so we want to make sure you've merged with this big company. Are our fees going to be the same as next year as they are this year despite that big company merger?
Yeah, no, they're not going up substantially or anything.
Yay. They're not going up substantially? What's that mean?
As for definition of substantially.
The proposal's actually on the agenda later.
Okay.
Hundred percent sure of my individual rate, but I mean, we already presented a budget, which I think is in line with previous years or less. Again, like years previous, you know, we were out there at hundreds of those outfalls. We've really narrowed it down, so.
I think the key is the DNA testing. You know, certainly people have come in when we look at project areas and stuff and we talk about what's in that fecal coliform we find and it's interesting to find that it is human.
Yep.
Some of it.
Some of it.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody out there have any questions?
I have. Oh, sorry. A question. This was on area one where you did 16 samples and six samples were greater than 200. Is that good or bad?
200s are baseline criteria.
Right.
So that's, it's worthy enough to follow up again and sample the next time as well.
So do we see repeat offenders? Do we know, like, I know you guys look at hotspots?
Yes.
And that stuff, so how do we make sure repeat offenders are complying?
Well, let me take this one, Rich. Again, the hotspots, we go out there, they have historically always been high in those areas. There are some of the areas we have tried the TV also and look for illicit discharge, illegal hookups in the storm sewer pipe that you can't see from the surface. We cannot pinpoint the exact resident on that street that could be, if it isn't exact, it could be all the residents on that street. We can't pinpoint exactly which resident on that street it is. All we know is that at the end of that pipe where we collect the sample, the numbers are always above the 200, which we consider a hotspot then. So, you know, even to go in there, we've tried doing some dye tracing in the past on some of these homes until it actually goes through the septic system, through the ground and that sort of thing. We're not seeing the dye show up in the catch basins. We have been lucky on one instance where we actually pumped it into, or we dumped it in the toilet, they flushed it and within 15 minutes, it was coming out. But that place had an illicit discharge pipe hooked into the catch basin and that's why we saw it so quickly there. So where you have six there, yes, that's, that should raise a warning sign to you that there is something going wrong in that general area.
Yeah, that's why we also show the max, kind of give a sense of range, but of those six that were greater than 200, you know, there's 250s, there's 500s. But some of those in years previous may have been much more elevated, so we keep track of them.
So what do we do next? If we know there's six, what do?
That's the pedal rigery.
Yeah, we may send out some more letters to residents.
Pedal rigery, so DP's already directed us to.
Put sores in.
I was going to say, sores are one way to go with it or, you know, mini treatment plants, which again, residents are not going to want to spend more money than they need to.
It's tied to the specific area where we're looking at, the sewers. Okay. I know it's area one, but area one is big, so.
Right. And if you, in our report that comes to the township, we will have specifically listed the outfalls that have those high levels. You can go back and look at one of the township maps then and see where those outfalls are located and know exactly what roads they're coming from.
Very good. Thank you.
Any else? Questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
See you next year.
Happy holidays.
You too. Any public comment tonight?
Keith Peters on Steep Chase Drive in the township.
Final evening, it's probably supervisor.
Just briefly, I wanted to talk about the building renovation idea. I know it's further down on the agenda, but now's the time for public comment. And I presented the supervisors and ancillary staff with some of the ideas that I had come across earlier. I talked about rejecting concept A and concept B, so I put together a little thing called concept I, because I understand there were eight previous concepts done and the ninth letter of the alphabet is I. So this is concept I. And the upshot of the whole presentation that I'd like to make is that I think there's enough land here on the municipal complex to put a new or renovated building. We don't need to touch the tennis courts and the basketball courts or any other part of Central Park or anywhere else in the township. I think there's enough land here to take care of the administrative needs of the township. I also talk about things like building up or down, up and or down. Solar panels or green roofing is something that I think ecologically makes sense. Switching to police and public side, which I think other people have also addressed, makes sense. I think from a traffic standpoint, a construction standpoint and parkside access, the public coming in. The salt building and the fuel pumps apparently need to be moved and I have them on, I think, page three of the presentation I have for you there. I think the, a common public meeting room makes, or common lobby, I shouldn't say public meeting room, but a common lobby for the public side and the police side could be where we currently are meeting, in the public meeting room. Again, part of a new building. And I talk about squaring off the front drive so that there are additional parking spaces for this lobby area for the police side, knowing that most of the public will be parking over on maybe the new side. And I have saved the mural. I couldn't really use Dan Aykroyd's voice of Julia Child from Saturday Night Live, but I think it's important to save that, so if we're going to demolish certain things, I don't think the mural should be one of them. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith. Anybody else have public comment? Announcements, our next meeting is Tuesday, December 15th. Good ideas for gifts, movie tickets, ski tickets, benches, bricks and the township mural print. Contact administration building for more information. What's the township mural print?
We have a print, like poster print of that.
Oh, okay.
That we can sell. That we can sell. That we do sell.
That we sell. All right. Next item on the agenda, minutes approval for the meeting of September, November 17th. Is there a motion to approve? They were voluminous, I should say.
Move to approve.
Looking more like a transcript than minutes, you know, I think. There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I know you're trying to be complete, but.
I'm in charge.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah. I don't need to hear.
I know, I had a tough time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Reports from the solicitor.
I have none tonight, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
None at this time.
Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Manager?
Yes, in your packet, you have, one thing we need to do is set the reorganization meeting for January 4th and then the auditors for January 5th. If there's a time that you would like to hold that.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
So we have to bring a judge in, right?
Yes, and they're usually pretty busy that day, so.
Yeah, let's do four o'clock. Four o'clock. So everybody okay with that?
Four o'clock on January 4th.
And then for the auditors, they typically meet in the evening. Are you okay with them at seven if they, if they're okay with seven?
Yep.
Okay.
If there's a new, is there somebody getting in?
Yes, there's a new auditor, he'll have to be here on the 4th, we'll make sure that he comes then.
Okay.
So what time was the auditors?
The auditors, usually they're at seven on the next day, Tuesday.
They'll confirm that though, because.
Yes.
All right, so we're waiting on the time on that one.
It most likely will be seven, but we'll confirm unless they want to meet earlier.
Okay.
The other thing I have is just for informational purposes, this is on the zoning hearing board application for Doylestown 2, Route 313, TVC, that's the drug center that's proposed. There's a new date and they amended their application. So the hearing's now January 28th. They amended their application to include a variance because they are going to drop slightly below the five acre requirement. As the board knows, you've directed us to attend Mr. Garten's office and I will be there, attending and observing and reporting back to the board. So that's really for your information or any questions at this point.
Okay. So we don't have to take any action on that tonight?
No.
All right, thank you. Mm-hmm. Status of, oh, that's us. Supervisors.
Why, something to say? Can I? Well, I just want to, I mean, this is just kind of a comment and a kudos to the staff. You know, I know we kind of gave you a big job last meeting to, you know, well, at least some of us did in terms of, you know, seeing where there were potential ways to find different cuts and whatnot and, you know, I think you did a tremendous job. I don't, you know, I think we have to go back and look at all of that and, you know, Barb and I may disagree on the essential versus non-essential of that, but I think you did like a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank you for asking us to do that. And obviously, if anybody has any comments or suggestions, if you can feed them to us. And then, we are meeting with Ways Means on the April 9th, I think it is, and we can kind of review it there and then obviously be prepared with anything for your packet for the meeting on the 15th. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Well, I do want to hear comments tonight on the, on what you presented.
Oh, okay.
So if you, when you're done, we can go.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, it was more just a kudos, like I think they did a great job, so.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else?
No, that's it.
Rick?
I want to report on two township meetings. One was the planning commission. We went to the Tabor Homes property and had a walkthrough meeting with the developer, Rob Gunlock, and the president of Tabor, Jonathan. As we walked the property and listened to Jonathan, some issues arose. You remember Rob was here at the board of supervisors meeting and explained that he was going to ask for a change in zoning, a use techs addition and a few additional waivers as well. At the next planning commission meeting, we reviewed what was discussed at the walkthrough and concluded that it would be good to have all the parties sit down together and see if there's a course of action that would benefit everyone. Could be developed. I'll keep you updated on that, but we're still working on the basics, actually, on the Tabor Homes project. The other meeting was the board of supervisors meeting. My comments at the last meeting were received significantly different than I intended them to be received. I believe poor communication is the responsibility of the communicator. Therefore, I apologize and would like to clarify my comments. The budget has been worked on for many months. Many volunteers from the Ways and Means Committee, supervisors and township staff spent well over 100 hours going through the proposed 2016 budget. After the budget was compiled and put into draft form, the next step was to vet the entire budget as a whole. This analysis of the total budget picture takes several weeks, but it's critical. When all the pieces of the budget puzzle were assembled, it was handed to the board of supervisors because of self-imposed time constraints without being vetted as a complete picture. The board of supervisors should not get a draft budget until the township manager has had enough time to go through the total assembled budget, line by line. The budget was by no means thrown together. My comments were not meant to imply that this is what happened. Each of the over 100 account lines were analyzed. The good news is this rush to get the budget to the board of supervisors will not happen again. Processes are being changed to ensure that in the future, a final draft budget will be delivered, will be delivered in adequate time to be vetted properly. Again, my apologies.
Okay, thanks. Ken, you have anything?
Comments. One, we've worked, the township, the staff and the EAC has worked hard to develop meadows throughout the township property and they've done a great job doing that. They have been recently cut, but they've been asked to be mowed to get ready for the spring growing. And all we ask is that the, when the mowing contracts go out, they stay within their confines of the mowing grass and not tread into the meadow territory. So I'm sure you'll take care of that, Dave. The second point is just to follow up a little bit on what Rick was commenting on. I already had discussions with Lee Schwartz, Chair of Ways and Means, in that one of the things we want to do in our first meeting in January is to do a post-mortem review of the process we went through this year. We did a lot of changes this year in the budgeting process and some really good stuff and some things that didn't go as well as we would have liked. So I think it's very important, right in the very beginning, watch fresh in everybody's mind, we go back, take a look at it, what can we change? How do we make it better and to make it smoother for everybody? So we're going to do that, our first meeting in January.
Okay. Thank you. Sean, you have anything?
I don't. Thank you. The running white committee has been met since the last meeting and other than, you've already mentioned about, I said nothing and then here I go, about gifts, gifts for the holiday season, bricks, benches, sections of the bike and hike path, which we, Stephanie, we talked about the last bike meeting, you can contact the township for that if you want to name a section after somebody living or deceased and then we go, so now's the time to do it.
Or name a piece of, a new playpiece at Kids Castle.
A Kids Castle, yeah.
Or a century trip. So many opportunities.
Lots of, lots of Christmas opportunities around here.
That's all, yeah.
I would like to comment on the memo that we received dated November 30th from the staff regarding the half mill reduction in the 2016 budget. I'm, for the most part, okay with most of it. I don't agree, however, that we should remove the proposed non-uniform HRA cards from the budget. I think that should stay in. Whatever that amount is, I think that belongs as an appropriate expense for the non-uniform staff. And I talked to Stephanie about the emergency continuity servers and I think that is something that we should be looking at in the proposed addition or renovation of our entire facility. And the other thing, I do check with the chairman of Kids Castle and he says that, and I agree, that the $25,000 can be reduced by 9,100, but the Kids Castle will still need $15,900 in the 2016 budget to meet requirements of a grant, funding grant source. Other than that, I am okay with it, so I'm just putting this out to you now because those are the things that I have a problem with. 95% of it, I'm okay. With that other 5%, I'm going to encourage the board to keep in the budget. 15,9 for the Kids Castle project and the HRA cards for the staff, non-uniform staff. Other than that, I'm good.
All right. Anybody else have any comment on that? Okay, next item on the agenda, blah, blah, okay. Shared use path.
Shared use path grant agreement for Lower State Road.
Mr. Council is here, who always talks and supports the Bike and Hike Committee, but this is the 100% reimbursable grant from PennDOT. This is the Federal Transportation Alternative Program grant that we received. You will see that that has increased by about 466,000. Our match that we initially did, which was the engineering on it, does not change at all. We are getting extra money in the grant to help with the railroad crossing, and Mr. Kelso will elaborate a little further.
I don't think I can add anything to that. It sort of sums it up.
So we're getting more money?
We're getting a 400-plus thousand, and it's mainly to help with the SEPTA crossing. This is Lower State Road, and I think all of us that use that road see a lot of dangerous pedestrian and bicycle activity there, and we've had people on our own Bike and Hike Committee fall and break bones at the railroad crossing. So it's, it's an important trail, it's a key component of the overall trail plan for the township and the community as a whole. And we were nervous for a while about the railroad crossing SEPTA, we anticipated them to step up, they didn't. They chose not to participate at all, although they've been extremely cooperative with us. They always have, and, and I think it was just a matter of circumstances here. But through our grant team, meaning Stephanie and Chris Stanford from Baker, I think that's the value of having an experienced team there. They, they understand the grant program, they understand what's happening in other grants in the area. And for example, on this one, SEPTA agreed to pay 100% of another railroad crossing in an adjoining community where the grant had anticipated grant money going towards that. So I think that worked out great, it's just having those contacts, working with the neighboring communities is a big, big helping grant program, so, more than we anticipate sometimes. So that's what we're asking. We're asking for the township to enter into this contract with, with PennDOT for the grant. Stephanie pointed out, the match has already been made. We got more money, but we didn't have to add any more match to it. This is an unusual grant program, where usually it's a 25% match, 50%. This is, we have to, our match is paying for the design. That's pretty well done. The contract with Baker in the original grant application was $80,000, so it's less than 10% match. You know, it's, it's a good way to do this. Adding another 400,000 didn't cost us a penny in match.
Excellent. So the total's $1,260,000, and it's 100% reimbursable?
Good job, Tom.
Well, I'm, hey, wasn't me.
Just a question about that, you had said SEPTA didn't step up? What does that mean?
Well, normally, normally on these SEPTA crossings, and if you remember the underpass replacement in, in the college, SEPTA shares costs on that. They don't have to, they have in the past, they chose not to on this one. And it was mainly because it wasn't, it wasn't tied to one of their stations, and the other ones, I think, were more, and the underpass was more of an opportunity to replace a deteriorating structure.
I'm assuming they have to approve or any work that's done at that crossing?
Yes, and they are working on the design with us. They're actually helping with the design.
Right.
But they're just not physically...
And that's underway.
Do the construction.
That's been going on for the past six months, probably.
Okay, so they'll help with the design, they'll help with the inspections, they're just not going to help with the work?
They're not going to help share the cost, right.
Okay, okay.
And that's, that's, we've got the money in the grant now to, to more than cover that.
Well, good job, everyone. We have a resolution to approve, is there a motion to approve the entry of this contract with the federal reimbursement?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, thank you again, Tom, for all your work on this, on the trails. Township building renovations, continued discussion. Ken, you doing this, or?
Yes, if...
The PowerPoint in the back will come up in a minute.
Is this the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we'll just talk to these.
Yeah, let's just talk to the paper.
Yeah, that's fine. The group met as, from the last board supervisor meeting, we said we start off with a small group, and that small group is Stephanie, Dick John, Joe Phillips from Architecture Group, myself. We did meet, our first meeting was on 11/25, and what we said we would do, as we needed additional experts bringing in from either the chief, or Ken Wallace, or anybody else, we would bring people in as, as we needed to. One of the key things that we wanted to do is we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We said we did a lot of good work, there was like seven or eight different alternatives discussed in the past, there was a lot of staff input, and we looked at space alternatives and all those different space requirements and all those different alternatives, so let's build on what, all the good work that was done. But one of the other premises was, is that we said, if we're going to look at any and all alternatives, the only one that is, the only bad idea is the one we don't talk about. So we were throwing everything on the table, and so let's talk about it, we can discount it, but let's make sure that it was, at least had its merit for a discussion point. We also said, let's build to resolve our immediate requirements. And what that means is that we have some very immediate needs that we need to resolve with site security, with what's happening on the police side, with the staff on the second floor, and we need to balance that with what are their future site plans, and what is the financial impact of doing all this stuff. So those are the things that we said we need to work at, and so what we did is said, let's start with a project concept and bring that forward. So next slide is our project concept. One is that the administration and the police would remain the existing site. We had other discussions that, can we move the police here, can we move the staff there? No, they're all going to stay on the existing site. But one of the primary things we said we wanted to do is flip the administration and the police. Today, we have the police on the park side, we have the admin on the parking lot side, and we want to flip the police, put them on that side, leave the administration open to the park area. Key thing here is that it provides the police with a controlled, secure access to the site and egress from it, allows them to go into their Sally Port, evidence storage, police activities, it's all separate from the public. Provides the administration more exposure to the general public and Central Park, and key thing is that, you know, we're going to have some renovations, and we're going to have new additions, and all those things will be required. Exactly how much we do or what we do, we haven't decided yet, but we're going to, we're coming forward later on with a approval from the board to say we can proceed with this idea. So basically, what we're saying is that the existing building will be, could be torn down, it could be just completely gutted it, but we're going to look at all, what is the best way to manage the space and come up with a good financial plan for doing this. We also looked at what are the projects that we can defer or reduce, and what we said is the wash bay, we would defer that. That was $167,000. Salt storage was reduced from 338 to 80,000, and that was already in the works in our budget for 2016. We had 40, we said we'd have 40 in 2017. Park maintenance storage, that was reduced from 627, 627,000 to 75,000, and we're proposing that the multipurpose recreation building be deferred at this point in time. Next slide. Key points to remember. If no renovations were done, we would still need to allocate within our five-year budgeting process to spend on infrastructure and the capital plan for approximately $2 million. We're going to have to upgrade HVACs, heating systems, and all that stuff. All that would have to happen if you did no renovations at all. So there's still a good chunk of money we would be spending. And just, this is just more for the board's thought, is because when we look at the estimates that we had for A and B, none of those had furniture expenses in them, so it would have been more than that. So I don't want people doing math in their head, what we're, what numbers we're coming to. So for board of supervisors' feedback, what we need now, and this is why we're coming here today, one, we said we would give you updates on what's going on, is we want your okay on the flip of the admin and the police. Put the police on that side, leave the admin on the park side. Playing courts remain in the current location, and also the multipurpose recreation building be deferred. And if they decide to bring that forward later, that would stand on its own merit, and that is not part of the renovation process.
I have a question. When we flip, are we expanding the space?
We would be, yes. We would be adding on, we would be renovating plus adding some space on.
To administration or police?
Yes.
Both?
We don't, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
This, what this is, is the concept. This is the concept. Now, we can go to the next one. If you agree to the flip, you agree to deferring the multipurpose room, and you defer, and the tennis court, your playing courts...
You mean, there's the, yeah, the big, the big gym, the nazeios?
Yes, yeah. You agree to those three, then we'll go work on, and come back with all the other stuff.
I'm okay with all that. My question is, what, if it's not about a space thing, what's the biggest reason? Is it the parking lot for flipping? Like, if you had to name...
Secure access.
Okay, it is, okay.
You provide, you want access in for the police?
Sally Port, okay.
And all that, it's away from the park, it's away from the public.
Okay.
That really secures the site.
Got it.
There's a lot of times when the police cars have to race out.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
How did the, how did the architects think about the flipping? We talked about that, that was part of one plan.
Actually, was part of one of the plans, and Joe said he would be doing stuff with his mashed potatoes on Thanksgiving, trying to come up with ideas. But, so, next slide is our next steps. Our next project meeting is December 9th. We will continue to provide, come back here and give you updates. And the other thing I said we would do is that you had asked for end-of-year recommendation. We cannot do that, you will come back by February 3rd with a recommendation.
Okay. We're good. Everybody good? Any questions?
I'm good.
Chief, what do you, how do you feel about everything?
I just would like to know how the flow of the flip would work.
Okay. Well, that's important.
It's huge of how...
Are you participating in these discussions?
We, we had one meeting. We had one meeting, so no, he hasn't, and yes, he will.
Okay, excellent.
See? You'll know.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Good job. All righty, next item, Police and Fire Federal Credit Union request to add to employees' options.
Yes. The Police and Fire Federal Credit Union came out, they gave a presentation to the entire staff that were interested, and we do have several employees, both uniform and non-uniform employees, that would like the ability to, I guess, bank with the Federal Credit Union, if that's appropriate wording, and use their services. We currently have agreements with the American Heritage Federal Credit Union and the Mark Sharp and Dome Federal Credit Union, where employees go, but this is just another tool and toolbox, letting them pick and choose and have variety. And we would recommend that we, we have to provide them a letter, saying that our employees can utilize and be a member.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the stormwater GHD proposal, which is quite timely.
Mm-hmm. You just saw the presentation, compliance with our MS4 permit. Their proposal would be for $14,950. We have the $25,000 allocated in our budget to do the stormwater work that they do for us on an annual basis.
So there's an extra $10,000 allocated for this, for next year?
It's 14,950, it was 13,7 previously.
No, it's 25 in the budget.
But there's 25 in the budget.
But there's other work that we do as part of that, which is if we have to make repairs of storm inlets and things like that as well, there's in-house money to do that as well.
So how, what's the increase, say, or the cost for next year?
From 13,7 to 14,950.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
A horrible increase. All right. The zoning hearing board application for the Brandy and Robert Alexander properties, this was an interesting read.
Mm-hmm, it was. This is an appeal of a zoning hearing board decision, or not zoning hearing, but of a zoning enforcement action taken by our code department. They have established a daycare center in the R1 zoning district.
Can I, just, just to be clarified?
Yes.
They're renting a prop, a building on this property?
Renting a cottage.
They're renting a cottage on this building, and they're renting the cottage for daycare?
Yes, totally in violation of our, they actually had a big, it was, I mean, it's a huge property, and so, and we actually, there was an article in the newspaper, and we immediately found it, and said, oh, it was very quiet, I, they don't have as, it's not a huge operation, so we haven't gotten any complaints or anything like that. But we did take an enforcement action immediately, and they're appealing that. My recommendation is, is that we send the solicitor to attend with us at the hearing.
Well, who are the parties? The landlord or the tenants?
The tenant.
The tenants are using the property, but the landlord is...
Oh, right, right, right.
Are they all in, all in this enforcement action, or?
Well, the property owner gets the enforcement action, because it's their property, so... But the application is actually filed on behalf of the tenant.
Okay.
I agree with Stephanie. This, this needs to be addressed, and I have no problem sending Jeff or his stand-in for that.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Now, if we're successful in this enforcement action, who bears the cost of sending our solicitor?
You always bear that cost.
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify that for the public.
I was like, I never thought of that question.
Just clarifying that for the public.
But I believe there's, there's fines that could be applied, right, Jeff?
Well, once they file the, if they don't comply after the zoning hearing board renders a decision, and you can file citations and do all kinds of different things, but once they appeal the notice of violation, then it stays those proceedings pending the zoning hearing board decision.
So today, they cannot run a daycare center?
They can until the zoning hearing board decides.
Okay.
All right. All right. Is that it? Announcements. Our next meeting on December 15th at 7:00 PM. Good gift ideas, you've heard them all. You can, you can name a portion of the trails, you can buy ski tickets, move, seats, ski tickets, movie tickets, benches, bricks, commemorative mural, township prints, pieces of Kids Castle, there's all kinds of things you can do. Great Christmas presents, so just contact our administrative offices for information on that. We're going to be meeting next with, with our board to interview for boards and commissioners vacancies, so that's what we're going to be doing next, so. But other than that, we're done with regular business today. Thank you very much, everyone.
Some checks to sign, I assume?
Yes, we, of course we do. We have 15 minutes.